Hello, everybody. How's everybody doing today? We're just this late afternoon. And we're going to start this workshop of the City Council along with the other Board of Directors. And as far as roll call, I think all five council members are here. And we will now go into a workshop for the City of Montclair's fiscal year 2021-22 preliminary budget. And some ground rules I'll lay out here. I know we have a very thick, long packet. And as far as presentation, so what we're going to do is, I think, when we get to page 31, the first 31 pages, we'll stop there and then ask if there's any questions or comments from council members. Then after that, we will do each section. From there, we'll stop after each section and do the same thing. And then I know we have public comment. I'm not sure any members of the public want to speak today. So what we'll do is, when the presentation is complete, then we will take public comment, either regarding the workshop or any other item. And then after that, after we're done with public comments, we will come back to the preliminary budget for final discussion and also to make a recommendation for the special city council meeting for Wednesday night to ratify the budget. I will say about the budget, by looking at it, it is a lot better compared to last year's budget. Obviously, one reason why is because we're at the post-pandemic. And the other reason why is because of additional revenues from Measure L that was adopted by the Montclair voters last November. I will now give this over to the city manager to start the presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As you indicated, this is a different budget than it is last year. It was actually a very difficult budget to put together for a variety of reasons. One, we had to address the issues of the pandemic and then try to use the previous year's budget, go back to fiscal year 1920, as the comparison and basically forget that last year even happened. So in doing that, it took a lot of extra time to produce the budget, which is one of the reasons why we are so far into the month of June and making this presentation to you this evening. But we believe that we've put together a very effective budget, one that satisfies nearly every single request from the respective departments. In fact, I think this is one of the first years that I've ever been here that the departments' requests were basically left intact with only some minor modifications. Typically, the process is for me to cut out as much as $5 million to $6 million out of budget requests on an annual basis. And this year, I cut out basically about $1.3 million, a very minimal amount in comparison. So I think that goes to indicate the positive trend that the City of Montclair finds itself in right now. Obviously, obviously, because of Measure L that is contributing to the city's economic improvement. But there are also economic improvements that are just occurring in what is described as only a very hot economy. California is leading the nation in nearly every aspect of economic performance. Unemployment slightly lagging behind other states in the country, but that is only because of the nature and the dynamics of employment in the state of California, which is unlike what other states require as it relates to their workforce. California's workforce is much more dynamic, requires much higher levels of education for many of the different job opportunities, and therefore, unemployment rates often lag behind in California. But the governor is anticipating that over the course of the next year, unemployment numbers in the state of California will improve significantly vis-à-vis the other states in the nation. While we may not catch up with the numbers in the other states, the actual numbers of improvement in California will far exceed the level of improvement in the other states. So we anticipate that as we get further and further away from this pandemic year, California will continue to experience a positive rebound in its economic profile. And I think, to a large degree, that is reflected in this budget. Keep in mind that this budget addresses coming out of a pandemic year, a year in which we had to fill a large number of gaps in the budget. So while Measure L projects a positive income stream for this next fiscal year, that money was largely dedicated to not only fixing the problems of the last year, but certainly allowing the departments to enjoy significant improvement to their budgets going into this next year, as well as trying to enhance working conditions for the employees. So I think that will be part of your understanding as we go through this budget process this year and through this explanation of the presentation tonight. You will see that, long-term, Montclair has a very bright future in front of us, not only from the perspective of the tax revenues that are coming into the city, but from the perspective of the development that is occurring in the community. We have a number of very significant projects that are being pushed forward. Certainly, the specific plan approved this last December by the City Council as it relates to the Montclair Place District will have a very long-term positive effect for the city. In fact, we're already receiving some initial proposals to indicate the development process that will occur at the North Montclair area, including the Montclair Place District. Of course, Village Partners, which the council also approved this last year, we expect to see go into construction perhaps late this year. And with the construction of that 360-unit project, that will be a significant bright spot in North Montclair, particularly as it relates to its contiguous relationship to the Montclair Trans Center. We expect to see that project inspire other projects coming into the area. Montclair Place District, the two projects that we expect to be on the board relatively soon in relation to that district will inspire other projects within Montclair Place District. We expect from that, we see the legs carrying over into Montclair East, particularly as we develop the specific plan for the Arrow Highway Mixed Use District. That will inspire projects in that area. In fact, one project already completed is a warehouse project on Moreno Street, Moreno or Arrow Highway?
Arrow.
Arrow Highway in North Montclair. We understand that that will be a medical-related pharmaceutical use, which will actually be a point-of-sale location for the City of Montclair, and that will be a very positive revenue generator for the city going forward. During this pandemic year, we had obviously projected that there would be significant losses to the city. And in fact, the budget discussion this evening will demonstrate that we did see quarter-to-quarter losses during the last year. The one positive bright spot was online purchasing, particularly in San Bernardino County, where the county pool recorded as much as, I believe, a 24% increase in sales tax revenue that went into the county pool. That money was distributed to local government agencies. That is what helped pull many cities out of an otherwise what was anticipated to be a very bleak year. For the City of Montclair in particular, the distribution of the county pools was a result of the formula that is used by the county pool distribution, and that is based on your historic sales tax performance. And because Montclair has a regional shopping center and has always had a high per capita sales tax performance rate in comparison to other cities, in fact, the only other city in the county that beats Montclair is the City of Ontario, and that was only maybe in the last 10 years. Prior to that, Montclair was the highest per capita performer in San Bernardino County. But because the county pool sales tax dollars are distributed based on that performance, that has been a very positive outcome for the City of Montclair. Unfortunately, there, and we'll get into that in the presentation, there's been legislation that has been introduced that will change that formula. And in fact, unless the distribution or fulfillment centers are located within your jurisdiction, you wouldn't get any of those sales tax dollars. So that would be a very negative outcome for the City of Montclair if that legislation gets traction. In addition to that, there are proposals to change the distribution formula from performance of sales tax to population, which, again, would hurt the City of Montclair. So these are some of the things that are trending in our future. But by the things that, the activities that we are pursuing, by the changes that the City Council has pursued, by the introduction of Measure L, and by the general improvement of the economy, we hope that we will continue to sustain a very positive future for the City of Montclair going forward. I will say that, right now, Measure L is not quite performing the way that we had anticipated. But it's early, and we hope that future quarters, as far as the detail that is reported to Measure L's performance, will be better than it has been for the first amount of data that we received related to Measure L. We are believing that it is the slow start of the economy coming back that is probably the greater factor in Measure L's initial performance. So we still stand behind the projection of $7.5 million. I would back away from a larger projection, where we anticipated that, on the better side of things, it could come in as high as $9 million. So at this point in time, I would say that we should stay safe with the $7.5 million projection. Otherwise, I would suspect that it would be lower than that. But the budget is based on that $7.5 million projection, and that's what we're going to stand on at this point in time. With that, I will say that the Finance Department has put a lot into producing the budget that is before you. It's a labor of love. And because it is a labor of love, Janet has twisted my arm and begged to make the presentation this evening. So I will be in standby mode to prepare to respond to questions from the City Council and maybe to add to whatever she is saying at any particular time in the presentation. And so with that, I hand it over to Janet now to continue with the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff, members of the audience. Tonight, I will be presenting to you the fiscal year 2021-22 General Operating Fund Budget Review. So we're going to start with the overview and budget process. This evening's workshop provides an overview of the proposed annual budget for the City of Montclair for fiscal year 2021-22 with focused discussion on the following topics: Budget process, producing a balanced budget, revenue and appropriations, unassigned and special purpose reserve funds, CAL-PRs, fiscal recovery post-COVID-19 pandemic, including recovery, coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, Measure L, critical infrastructure improvement bonds, and pension obligation bonds, and reorganization element. The annual budget development process includes the following significant steps: Finance Department staff develop and refine revenue projections; Finance Department staff, in conjunction with departments, forecast personnel requirements; Department heads and their staff are provided with prior year amounts and formats for budgeting annual budget requests; Departments prepare their budget requests for appropriations; City Manager and Finance Department meet with department heads as appropriate to evaluate, modify, and finalize department-level requests; The proposed annual budget document is submitted for City Council review and consideration. Now, we will discuss producing a balanced budget. The annual and primary goal related to budget preparation: Produce an operating budget where revenues equal or exceed appropriations. The fiscal year 2021-22 budget, as presented, has a net excess of general fund revenues over general fund operating appropriations in the amount of $2,79,847. This excess in general fund revenues is directly related to projected increases in the city's sales tax and transactions and use tax revenues. The surplus in general fund revenue over general fund appropriations has enabled the general fund unassigned reserve to be brought to $8 million, which is approximately 24.95% of the general fund operating appropriations, effectively meeting council's unassigned reserve ratio goal of 25%. We'll move on to revenues. On this table, you can see our current year all funds estimated revenue is $57,75,691, which is an increase of $12,523,121 over the current fiscal year. The general operating fund, current year, $35,2,751, which is an increase of $6,40,221 over the current fiscal year. Significant revenue components: General fund, $8,931,276 increase in property, sales and use, and transaction use taxes, primarily due to a rebounding economy following reopening of the state post-COVID-19 pandemic and the passage of Measure L by Montclair voters at the November 3, 2020 general municipal election. Of this total, $2.6 million is set aside in this budget for the debt service payment on a 2021 lease revenue bond. $2.1 million is allocated to the unassigned reserve fund. $850,000 represents transfers, including $558,000 to a UAL maintenance fund and $300,000 to the equipment replacement fund.
I just want to say at this point, that, of course, we've talked about establishing this UAL maintenance fund, which we are calling a UAL POB maintenance fund. If the council does approve doing pension obligation bonds, this is initial allocation to that fund. And we'll get into a discussion later on during this presentation as to the reason why we are recommending this UAL/POB maintenance fund and how that program would be funded.
$1.9 million additional operating monies, balance used to restore monies drawn from the unassigned and special reserve funds to reduce a balanced budget during fiscal year 2020-21 and respond to city council-approved pandemic-related expenditures. Additional revenue components, significant ones for the general fund, $36,600 increase in intergovernmental revenues, primarily due to a projected increase in post-reimbursement and a proposed new contract with Greyhound for the Trans Center lease/maintenance.
I can just add on to that. We have been in discussion with Greyhound. They are currently located in a office in the city of Clermont, and they would like to reduce their operating costs and relocate to a bus bay at the Montclair Trans Center. Omnitrans is willing to share a bus bay with Greyhound. They will have a few buses leaving the Trans Center on a daily basis, and Greyhound and Omnitrans, as well as the City of Montclair, have agreed that this is feasible. Therefore, our last discussions with Greyhound have indicated that Greyhound will pay the city an annual maintenance fee related to maintaining the service parking area. As you know, the City of Montclair is responsible for maintenance of the Trans Center property as well as security. Greyhound will be required to make an annual contribution to that. In addition to that, you will recall that the city would like to put a fixed restroom facility at the Trans Center, and Greyhound has also agreed to make a contribution towards the purchase of that restroom facility.
Additionally, $70,800 decrease in fines and forfeitures, primarily due to a reduction in parking citations and vehicle impound fees to reflect actual revenues received for the current year. $134,800 increase in miscellaneous revenue, primarily due to a projected increase in interest income. Significant revenue components: All other fund accounts, $56,758 increase in the gas tax fund, due primarily to the reopening of the state post-COVID-19 pandemic, resulting in an increase of vehicle usage and gasoline purchases; $222,713 increase in the Measure I fund, due primarily to the reopening of the state post-COVID-19 pandemic, resulting in an increase in retail sales; $202,250 increase in the Community Development Block Grant Fund, recognizing increased federal allocations available through San Bernardino County for costs related to the COVID-19 pandemic; $3250,000 increase in the American Rescue Plan Fund, recognizing increased federal allocations available through San Bernardino County for costs related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Now, we'll move on.
Item, of course, was related to, and we'll get into that further in the presentation, that's the two tranches that the federal government has agreed to provide municipalities and other local government agencies throughout the nation. And Montclair's allocation at this point in time is projected to be $7.5 million over the course of the two years.
So now, we'll move on to appropriations. So as you can see in this table, the appropriations for all funds, exclusive of debt service for the department request, was $45,665,502. City Manager approved $44,617,028 for a change of $1,048,474. Total for the general operating fund, department's request, $34,019,900. City Manager approved $32,64,243 for a change of $1,955,657. So the City Manager recommended amounts, all funds, this current, for next fiscal year, $49,807,415. The current year, $42,196,318 for a change, an increase of $7,611,097. General operating fund for fiscal year 21-22, $32,64,243. This current fiscal year, $28,730,780 for an increase of $3,333,463. So for Personnel Services, all funds, $28,901,483, which is 64.8% of total appropriations, which is up from $26,271,670, or 66.3% for fiscal year 2021. The general fund, $23,663,705, which is 73.8% of general fund appropriations, which is up from $21,815,666, or 75.9% for fiscal year 2021. For Personnel Services, currently, 189 full-time positions, 187.61 assigned to general fund, sewer fund, gas tax, economic development fund, and grants; .90, Montclair Housing Corporation; .49, Montclair Succession Redevelopment Agency, and we currently have six part-time benefit positions. For Services and Supplies, all funds, $15,229,220, which is 47.5% of total appropriations. This is up from $13,526,900, or 32.5% for fiscal year 2020-21. For the general fund, $8,301,188, or 25.9% of the general fund appropriations. This is up from $7,395,722, or 25.5% for fiscal year 2020-21. For capital outlay, we have $486,325 budgeted for fiscal year 2021-22, of which $346,975 is being funded by the Equipment Replacement Fund. For the City Manager Department, $53,000 for computer equipment for information technology, funded by the general fund. For the Police Department, $38,500 for one investigations vehicle; $178,475 for three patrol vehicles, all funded by the Equipment Replacement Fund. Fire Department, $7,500 for an ME-152 preconnect hose bed modification, and $32,650 for forcible entry and ventilation training props, both coming out of the general fund. For the Public Works Department, $45,000 for a Chevrolet regular cab flatbed truck, coming from their Equipment Replacement Fund; $80,000 for a Toro Ride-On mower, coming from the Equipment Replacement Fund and the Park Maintenance Fund; and $45,000 mobile column heavy equipment lift from the Equipment Replacement Fund. So here, you see a table showing all of the budget allocations by department. So the change from the prior year is $2,483,406 in total for all funds. Our debt service is going up to $5,190,387 for the inclusion of the $2.6 million proposed payment for the new lease revenue bond for fiscal year 2021. So that is increased by $2,599,625. So our fund transfers, we have our normal transfer in from the Traffic Safety Fund to the General Operating Fund of $100,000. That's a transfer we do each year. So the preliminary operating budget recommends the following transfers in to the general fund operating budget: $100,000 from the Traffic Safety Fund for applicable programs. The preliminary operating budget recommends the following transfers out from the general fund operating budget to the special purpose funds indicated below: $300,000 to the Equipment Replacement Fund to replenish the fund for future purchases, and $558,661 to the proposed UAL POB amortization fund for maintenance of any new UAL in the event of the City Council approves an issue of pension obligation bonds. So now, we'll move on to the general fund operating fund balance, unassigned reserve. So as you can see here, at the end of, estimated at the end of fiscal year 21-22, our operating fund balance, unassigned reserve, will be at $8 million, which is 24.95% of the general operating appropriations. And you can see it's increased from 13.4% in fiscal year 2011-12, up to now, we're at the 24.95%, which is basically reaching the goal of 25%. Government-Finance Officers Association reserve ratio recommendation is 25%. City Council direction: Maintain unassigned reserve ratio of 25% of operating appropriations. Estimated June 30, 2022 general operating fund's fund balance estimate of approximately $8 million effectively meets the threshold target of 25% of operating appropriations. Obtaining a fund balance in the general operating fund that represents no less than 25% of the general operating fund's operating budget for fiscal year 2021-22 is achievable due to the following: Fiscal restraint achieved by implementation of sound economic policies and practices; the passing of Measure L by voters at the November 3, 2020 general municipal election; the reopening of the state post-COVID-19 pandemic, resulting in an increase in retail sales and the associated rebound in economic activity. As well as reviewing the shared allocation of personnel-related costs between the general operating fund, other city entities, and other city funds; sales and use tax, transaction and use tax, and property tax improvements related to property development activities occurring throughout the Montclair community. City staff will continue to maintain a fund balance ratio in the general operating fund's unassigned reserves that represents no less than 25% of the general operating fund's appropriations budget. So now, we'll move on to maintaining general fund's fund balance and reserves. So in recent years, the city's success at achieving and maintaining a healthy general fund operating fund unassigned reserve fund balance has been accomplished through commitment to the following coordinated objectives: Implementation of sound economic policies and practices; Achieving a shared allocation of personnel-related costs between the general operating fund and other city entities and other city funds; Controlling adjusting the number of full-time personnel to address economic changes; Employees required to contribute toward CAL-PRs-related member costs; and implementation of revenue enhancement measures. Despite efforts to promote a healthy general operating fund, fiscal management practices of the city are annually countered by the decisions of the CAL-PRs Administrative Board of Directors to substantially increase employer pension rates. Actions implemented by the CAL-PRs Board of Directors produce cumulative year-to-year increases in unfunded accrued liabilities, UAL, and the employer rate. Annual rate increases are anticipated through fiscal year 2032-33, when the total annual CAL-PRs payment is projected to be in excess of $10.5 million. For fiscal year 2021-22, the cumulative CAL-PRs payment is estimated at $7.85 million, including $5.708 million in the UAL, up $4.9 million from fiscal year 2013-14. The UAL is currently estimated to be approximately $79 million. Recent and ongoing efforts designed to enhance city revenues include the following: Formation of a new transactions and use tax district, Measure L, approved by voters at the November 3, 2020 general municipal election; Ongoing evaluation of service contracting for specified programs targeted at maintaining and enhancing services and achievable cost efficiencies; Consideration of a Proposition 64 compliance program and any related fee structure; Consideration of pension obligation bonds to cap annual employer payments on unfunded accrued pension liabilities; Promoting development within North Montclair pursuant to the amended North Montclair downtown-specific plan, with projects to include high-density residential and mixed-use development; Pursue development within the Montclair Place District-specific plan area with development to address the changing nature of the retail industry; Promote housing, commercial, and industrial development projects throughout the Montclair community; Reestablish the Economic Development Housing Department to promote the city's economic development, enhance Montclair's sales and property tax base, and develop affordable housing for the community; Adopt the general plan update and the Arrow Highway Mixed Use District-specific plan to promote appropriate zoning patterns throughout the community and direct development in the northeast area of the city. At this point, I'll stop for any questions.
Thank you. I know that Councilmember Lopez walked out for a second, so if, any questions, push your next speaker or your speaker button there. Any questions on my left? Any questions on my right?
Just wanted to quick comments, Mr. Mayor.
The, excuse me, in looking at, hearing the information about Greyhound, although it's a minimal amount in the city, Greyhound is a connector to, for Amtrak, and they do services with them, which could be a benefit to residents who want to get into LA. For Amtrak, MetroLink is not always an option because of the hours they run. And so what Amtrak does, when you buy a ticket from certain areas, it includes the bus that'll take you to Union Station. So for some of our residents or the people in the area, that might be a minor benefit. Amtrak does go to some of the places that, you know, some of the airlines don't go. So that may be a benefit. In looking at the, and this is just a question. I'm going back in my mind now many years, and Mr. Mayor, you may remember this. Lee McDougal was still our city manager. We were looking at replacing some police cars. We still have the Chevrolet Caprice. And at the time, the factory was giving cities special deals to buy that car, and it was already equipped for police. Do you know if, I mean, we're obviously not there yet, but when we get to that point, maybe we can find out if whatever cars we're looking at have that kind of a deal? Because I thought it saved us at the time, you know, I wouldn't say a substantial amount of money, but some money. Because we're looking at sixty thousand piece for a car that, I guess, is not bad today when you consider the cost of everything else. But is that something we could look at at that time?
Well, right now, we purchase, excuse me, primarily Ford SUVs for police vehicles, and it is actually one of the few vehicles that are actually manufactured by the auto industry for police use. So there is not really competition in the market, and those sorts of programs really are no longer available. We can always piggyback with other agencies. That's the way to achieve discounts, and whenever we can do that, we do do that.
As I said, I'm going way back in my memory bank here on that. And at the time, that's true, there was a lot more competition, but, excuse me. The, and we'll get into more of this, I guess, on the next page, but I just see PERS as being a huge, it, I don't want to use the cliches, but it's the big item sitting in the room that affects everything in our budget. And I will say from the get-go, I fully believe in defined benefit pension plans, although I'm not really the recipient of one. I'm in private sector. I wish private sector had them as well. It's just we have to find ways within the PERS system to make it work for us. Because right now, we are a smaller city, so we're in a different band than some of the other cities around us, so our costs are greater. But it's a huge issue for us, and anything we can do to make sure that we keep that commitment to our employees, both now and in the future, anything we can do to bring those costs down to our residents is a positive.
And we do have a more engrossed discussion coming up on CalPERS, so hopefully your questions and concerns will be answered when we get there.
Okay. Any more questions? Ben, you have any questions?
Just two. Real fast on the Greyhound. That's going to come back to the city council, the lease agreement. Am I correct, Ed?
Yes, yeah, we will be bringing that to the city council as an agenda item. We'll discuss the terms of the agreement. I believe it's a fifteen thousand dollar a year contribution towards security and maintenance. And the contribution towards the restroom, I believe, is around fifty thousand dollars. But we're still negotiating.
Half and half, yeah. In terms of the equipment replacement fund, it's not on this list here, but I know that we submitted a grant with the federal government to obtain a, is it a fire engine or fire truck? Or is it, it's modified. It's not a true fire truck, it's modified.
Well, no, it's, it's a fire truck that simply has a smaller wheelbase. The smaller wheelbase will allow it to transition through the high-density developments easier than the fire trucks we have in deployment now.
Yeah. So what I want to say is that if this is not awarded, I would like this item to come back to the city council for discussion if the city itself want to pay for this out of the general fund if it's not awarded. So that's what I'd like to see. Obviously, we'll find out that later in the fiscal year, but I just want to go on, go on the record. So there's no, no more questions, then we will move on to the next item, which is, I believe, CalPERS.
Yep, CalPERS employer costs.
My favorite subject.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. So CalPERS employer costs. So as you can see from this chart, our normal cost for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two is one million eight hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Our unfunded liability, five million nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars, for a total of seven million eight hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars. The projected employee payments is one million three hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars. We have an increase this next fiscal year of six hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and eleven with both the UAL and our normal, normal cost combined. What is on Montclair's CalPERS horizon? The combined estimated twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two annual UAL and employer rate payment is approximately seven point eight million, representing an increase of approximately four point eight million since fiscal year twenty-thirteen, fourteen. The increase experienced by the city is recurring going forward, i.e., it does not last for just one year, but compounds and carries over year to year. Had the Public Employee Pension Reform Act, PAPRA, of twenty-twelve not become law and had the city, over the last decade, not negotiated with all employees and bargaining groups to pay all or a portion of the member contribution, the city would be paying approximately one point three-five-two million of the annual member rate for a total fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two payment of nine million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars six hundred and fifty-four. February of twenty-eighteen, CalPERS approved shortening the period over which actuarial gains and losses are amortized. Unfunded accrued liabilities, or UAL, to twenty years from thirty years for new pension liabilities. Shortening the amortization period results in significantly larger annual increases to the CalPERS UAL. CalPERS continues to experience problematic performance on investment earnings, burdening member agencies with annual cost increases to the UAL and employer rates. For the year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty, CalPERS posted a net rate return of four point seven percent on investments. Its target is seven percent. The fund's net position increased by nineteen point five billion, increasing to three hundred and ninety-two point five billion as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty, compared to three hundred and seventy-two point six billion one year earlier. CalPERS continues to experience problematic performance on investment earnings, burdening member agencies with annual cost increases to the UAL and employer rates. For the month ending May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, CalPERS estimated asset value is four hundred and sixty-three point seven billion. As of last June, the funding level averaged seventy point one percent based on three hundred and ninety-two point five billion in investments. CalPERS paid out two, twenty-five point eight billion dollars in benefits to more than seven hundred and thirty-two thousand retirees, up one point six billion over the previous year. CalPERS investment performance over three years is six point six percent; five years, six point three percent; ten years, eight point five percent; twenty years, five point five percent; and thirty years, eight point zero percent. In December twenty-sixteen, CalPERS approved lowering its discount rate from seven point five percent to seven percent over the course of three years, as follows, for local governments. For fiscal year twenty-eighteen, nineteen, seven point three seven five percent; for fiscal year twenty-nineteen, twenty, seven point two five percent; for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-one, seven percent.
So that is important, because when they lower their rate of assumption, that means that they anticipate that their earnings are going to be less, but their obligations continue to rise. So if you're projecting that your earnings are less, but your obligations are going up, somebody has to pay the difference. And the entities that pay the difference are the contract agencies, including the city of Montclair.
Lowering the discount rate means employers will continue to see increases in both their normal costs and unfunded accrued liabilities. On average, employer rate increases will be approximately one to three percent of payroll for miscellaneous plans and two to five percent for safety plans. Thirty to forty percent increases in current UAL payments over a twenty-year amortization period are also projected to occur. Responding to CalPERS cost increases, be active. Interact with CalPERS to address rate impacts. Previous discussion in fiscal year twenty-fourteen, fifteen resulted in temporary reduction of two point one million dollars over proposed increase.
And I want to point out that Montclair was the first agency after twenty-fifteen, when CalPERS started implementing these changes, to contact CalPERS and insist that the, over two million dollar increase that they were proposing to pass on to the city of Montclair that particular year was not something that we could contemplate within our budget. And so through the process of those discussions, CalPERS agreed to smooth that over a number of years. And based on that discussion, CalPERS engaged with approximately thirty-six other agencies in the state of California and extended that same smoothing practice to those agencies as well.
We presented CalPERS with a multi-point plan to control rate impacts on contract partners, control labor costs impacted by CalPERS rates, reduce long-term rate impacts by supporting legislative policy changes, consider pension bond to address unfunded actuarial liabilities, and reduce interest by paying annual payment at start of the fiscal year. So continue to prudently maintain fiscal operations by controlling expenditures, proposed increases to revenue, pursue new development in the community, control the size of the labor force, share pension-related costs with employees, consider pension obligation bonds to produce long-term savings, control annual increases to the total rate, and improve budget oversight and budgeting practices. Now we'll move on to restoring the city's fiscal integrity post-COVID-19 pandemic.
Hold on for a second.
Sure.
Any questions? Bill, you have a question, Bill?
No. My thing isn't turning off.
Okay, we'll take care of that. Is Mr. Lopez?
Ms. Colbrook, real quick, real quickly. On the statement, on average employer rate increases will be approximately one to three percent of payroll for miscellaneous plans and two to five percent for safety plans. Are we talking one to three percent annually?
Yes. That is correct.
So we, as the employer, expect to see one to three percent in increase every year from here on out?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to the next section. I'll be right back after you. I'll be right back. So, Bill, you're in charge, Bill. Don't mess it up.
Mayor Proten, if I might, another question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Knowing that they're going to be going up one to three percent, if we do the pension obligation, the P O B, how does that counter the anticipated one to three percent increases? If we're anticipating a one to three percent increase every year for payroll, how, how is our bond that we're going to float, or we're at least in consideration of doing that, how is that anticipating those, those rising costs?
Well, the pension bond, the pension obligation bonds transfers the debt for the UAL, which is a different, so what CalPERS has done is they've, in twenty-fifteen, they broke their annual payment down into two components. One is the unfunded accrued liability, and the second one is the employer rate, which is what they call their normal cost range. And the reason that they did this is that the employer rate itself was becoming a massive number. In fact, you would find that sometimes when you looked at a specific bargaining group and you saw what the employer rate was climbing to, in some instances, that employer rate was climbing up to a hundred and fifty percent. So that meant for every dollar of payroll, you were paying CalPERS a dollar and fifty cents just for this one benefit. And CalPERS decided that it would be a better PR move for them to split it out and create the UAL and the employer rate. The employer rate would be more controlled on an annual basis, and most of the increases go to the UAL, because the UAL covers effectively all of the annuitants, the people who are retired, and their projections as to when they do mortality table actuarial studies, and they project what their cost impacts will be based on how long a person will live, what they're earning upon their point of retirement. Those numbers result in their unfunded balance, what they say you owe that you never paid for while the employee was a member of your agency. So in breaking this down, they were able to lessen the impact on the organization, on the employer rate, and push the bulk of it to the UAL. So when we talk about these annual increases, they're spread over both of them, but with this difference. When you're talking about the employer rate, the employer rate is affected more typically by these smaller percentage increases. The UAL is impacted by increases as well related to the increases that they give to the annuitants. But more importantly, it's affected by their loss in the investment world. So when PERS loses money, they push the bulk of that into the UAL. And that is why the UAL increases by millions of dollars on an annual basis, and the employer rate increases more incrementally. So those numbers that you just indicated apply to both, but the UAL gets even more impacted because of these other issues.
Hence, hence, their, for lack of a better word, their bad investments then are then passed on to us as the employer.
Yes. If they're not achieving seven percent, so for example, when we talked about them only achieving four point seven percent, that difference of the four point seven to the seven percent, which is what they expect to earn, is passed into the UAL.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on now to restoring the city's fiscal integrity post-COVID-19 pandemic. So economic recovery post-pandemic. Calendar year twenty-twenty demonstrated successful fiscal quarters of decline compared to the same quarters in twenty-nineteen. A four point seven percent decline in the first quarter; thirty-three percent decline in the second quarter; five point seven percent decline in the third quarter; eleven percent decline in the fourth quarter, which is the Christmas holiday quarter. The first two quarters of calendar year twenty-twenty-one are projected to demonstrate similar declines in revenue compared to the same quarters in twenty-nineteen. Montclair's sales and use and transaction and use tax revenues are projected to fully recover year to year through fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. To cope with the projected decline in general fund revenue for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-one, the city manager proposed a general operating fund budget that was two point five million below, I'm sorry, two point oh five million below fiscal year twenty-nineteen, twenty. Fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-one also required a spend-down of approximately one point eight million in general operating fund unassigned reserve monies to fund various pandemic-related expenditures, including offsetting revenue losses for the last two quarters of fiscal year twenty-nineteen, twenty. Early pandemic projections indicated cities would suffer extraordinary fiscal losses due to the series of state-issued stay-at-home orders nationwide that shuttered retail economic activity. However, in California, online retail activity continued consumer spending, buoying sales tax receipts distributed through county pools. In San Bernardino County, the countywide pool increased by twenty-eight percent for twenty-twenty due to legislative changes that expanded internet activity subject to taxations and consumer purchase. County pool sales tax receipts are distributed based on a municipal agency's prior tax revenues, a distribution formula beneficial to Montclair. Cities hosting distribution and fulfillment centers are promoting legislation to redirect online sales tax activity back to point-of-sale. Other agencies promote distribution based on population. Both distribution formulas would have negative effects for Montclair. Passage of Measure L on November third, twenty-twenty, and the city's emerging economic recovery from the pandemic provide the city with the means to restore many of the reductions to personnel, services, supplies, and capital projects that were imposed in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty, twenty-one, including restoring the general operating fund unassigned reserve ration to twenty-five percent of the general operating fund budget; restore frozen positions and other positions affected by the pandemic and recent successive years of fiscal restriction. Fund department requests for programs, personnel, services and supplies, and capital purchases year to year. The general fund operation budget increased from twenty-eight million seven hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars in fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-one to thirty-two million sixty-four thousand two hundred and forty-three in the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Improve conditions of employment. Allocate two point six million toward the annual payment on a twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two issue of lease revenue bonds. The proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget recommends that revenues generated by all general fund reserve sources in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, including property, sales and use, and transaction and use taxes, be used to fund- and use taxes, be used to fund all general fund programs on operations of the city, including the following. Recover from personnel and services and supplies restrictions imposed during the 2020 coronavirus pandemic. Achieve a necessary reorganization of personnel to accommodate the evolving scope of service delivery. Restore and meet city council objectives related to general fund reserves. Achieve improvements to conditions of employment. And fund a lease revenue bond to achieve an expansive array of critical infrastructure Transaction and use tax district, Measure L. Passage of Measure L. Approved by voters at the November 3, 2020, general municipal election, presented to voters as a general tax. Measure L ballot language complies with the purpose and intent of a general tax. Derived revenues are expended at the discretion of the local governing body to fund an array of general government services. Does not qualify as a special tax measure and cannot be used for a specific purpose or purposes to the exclusion of the general purposes of a local government. Funds raised by Measure L are placed and commingled in the city's general fund to be used for all government operations and thus are not identifiable except as general fund revenue. Accordingly, the fiscal year 2021-22 general fund expenditure budget does not reference revenue raised through Measure L as a funding source for any programmed expenditure. Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. City staff anticipates receipt of approximately $7.5 million in coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, distributed in two annual tranches fiscal year 2021-22 and 2022-23 through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. The American Rescue Plan comes with restrictions on use of fiscal recovery funds distributed. Funds must be used by December 31, 2024, and only for the following purposes. Unspent funds are to be returned to the U.S. Department of Treasury. Respond to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19 or its negative economic impacts. Provide premium pay to eligible workers for locality that are performing essential work or provide grants to eligible employers that have such workers. For the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of the locality due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year prior to the emergency. Make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. The U.S. Department of Treasury continues developing specific guidance on allowable uses of the funds and will determine final allocations based on the most recent census data and the final language in the law. For localities with populations under 50,000, final rules are expected to be completed in late July 2021, with funds being available in August 2021. Localities must make periodic reports to the Treasury Department to account for funds expended. Except as provided for COVID-19-related infrastructure improvements, the city manager anticipates seeking general guidelines from the city council regarding disposition of coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. The fiscal year 2021-22 general operating fund budget proposes utilizing approximately $645,045 in coronavirus local recovery funds for qualifying modifications to city facilities. Remodel theater room restroom, $75,000. Store front window at Public Works Community Development Counter, $4,000. Install sliding electronic entry door in city council administrative office area, $22,000. Install Civic Center Monument Reader Sign, $60,000. Remodel Memorial Garden/Courtyard, $45,000. Construct new library restrooms, $100,000. Remodel library courtyard, $50,000. Remodel Station 151 and 152 shower/restroom areas, $150,000. Replace carpeting at Station 151 and 152 with polished concrete, $100,000. Install automatic ADA sliding door at Fire Station 151, $16,000. Install access reader for electronic entry at Stations 151 and 152, $16,545. And replace flooring in senior center lobby, $6,500. Localities must make periodic reports to the U.S. Department of Treasury to account for funds expended. General operating fund facilities projects. The proposed fiscal year 2021-22 general fund operating budget includes the following major capital projects. Civic Center. Interior painting repairs. City Hall. Community Center. Youth and Senior Center. Human Services Facility, $46,000. Refinish community center gymnasium and stage floors and recable court floors, $8,000. Exterior painting, siding, roof improvements of buildings at Civic Center Campus, $259,100. New carpeting, flooring at Civic Center Facilities, $61,500. Relocate Freedom Plaza artwork to Civic Center Campus and reconstruct pedestal, $10,500. Splash pad launching services for 2022 season, $10,000. This item is not included in the current budget, but we will add it during the mid-year budget review. The proposed fiscal year 2021-22 general operating fund budget includes the following major capital projects. Police Campus Fire Facilities. Replace generator fuel lines at police facility, $3,500. Repair and polish terrazzo flooring, $15,000. Pressure wash facility, police facility roof windows, $14,350. And glass treatments at Fire Station 151 and 152, $12,000. City Council Priority Objectives. In preparing for the fiscal year 2021-22 budget, the city council recognized two priority objectives. Controlling public employee pension costs and addressing the community's need for critical infrastructure projects. On April 20, 2021, a city council workshop was conducted on pension obligation and lease revenue bonds. Fiscal year 2021-22 issue of lease revenue bonds. 30-year amortization, bond par amount of $42,770 plus bond premium of approximately $4.524 million for an estimated $47 million deposited to infrastructure project fund. Total debt service approximately $72,712,565. Annual payment approximately $2.6 million. So this lease revenue bond will provide funding for various critical infrastructure projects, including pavement meeting rehabilitation, traffic calming, safe routes to schools, systemic traffic and roadway improvements, park development improvements, facilities and grounds improvements, Central Avenue Bridge replacement rehabilitation, Montclair Transcenter improvements, reclaimed water pipe extension to North Montclair, design and engineering and construction improvements for roadways, pedestrian paths, and utilities in Montclair, other critical projects. Recommend establishing a 2021 issue, I'm sorry, 2021-22 issue of lease revenue bonds debt service fund. Commit $2.6 million annually in general fund revenue for debt service on critical infrastructure lease revenue bonds. Dedicating funds provides assurance to credit raters and bondholders of the city's creditworthiness and fiscal capacity to meet debt service obligations. Funding infrastructure projects complies with voter survey results related to formation of a new transactions and use tax district, Measure L. City council agenda item on a fiscal year 2021-22 lease issue of lease revenue bonds to be presented on or about August 2021. So fiscal year 2021-22 issue of pension obligation bonds. Proposed as a means to effectively budget, manage, and control the city's annual California public employees' retirement system unfunded accrued liability contribution. City's estimated UAL as of June 30, 2019 was $77,699,81. As of today, the city's UAL is approximately $79 million. All or a portion of the UAL can be funded through pension obligation bonds. The city council, at its meeting of May 3, 2021, authorized pursuing judicial validation for POBs. On May 17, 2021, the complaint for validation and the ex parte application for publication were filed and accepted in the San Bernardino Superior Court. Validation process as a court of competent jurisdiction to rule that the proposed POBs are legal, valid, and binding. Debt on the POBs would be serviced annually with general fund monies that would otherwise be budgeted by the city to meet its CalPERS UAL payment obligation. The POB process replaces the CalPERS UAL for POB at a lower interest rate from 7% to an estimated 4% based on current rates. City staff proposed three POB funding scenarios. Scenario 1, bell curve. Amortization period 2022 to 2041. CalPERS UAL debt service versus POB debt service, $141,653,510 versus $102,141,847. Total projected savings, $39,511,663. Scenario 2, level debt service. Amortization period 2022 to 2040. CalPERS UAL debt service versus POB debt service, $141,653,510 versus $102,490,327. Total projected savings, $39,163,183. Scenario 3, level debt service. Amortization period 2022 to 2045. CalPERS UAL debt service versus POB debt service, $141,653,510 versus $111,741,590 for a total projected savings of $29,922,920. UAL POB amortization service fund. Scenario 3 produces less total savings but provides greater flexibility to service future UAL growth. If Scenario 3 is selected, the city manager proposes using the calendar year 2022 CalPERS UAL payment of $5,707,689 and Scenario 3 annual debt service payment of $4,654,953 to establish a baseline for allocating $1,052,736 baseline difference between the 2022 UAL payment and the 2022 POB debt service payment to a UAL/POB amortization service fund. UAL POB amortization service fund to annually service any new UAL growth will reduce the amortization period on the POB. In 20 years, the UAL POB amortization service fund would accrue an estimated $21,54720 plus interest, potentially used to reduce POB amortization period by up to four years. And I'll stop here for any questions.
Okay. Any questions from council members? I'll start with Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, Ms. Colbruck. Quite a bit here, so I was writing some notes as you were talking. On page 50, let's go through some of these items. Installing sliding electronic entry door in city council administrative office area, are we talking the main entrance on Benito?
Well, we're talking about the entrance into the administrative office, the main hall.
In the lobby?
Yes.
So in the lobby, the main hall, the two wooden doors that now lead into the administrative area where the city council offices are?
Uh-huh.
That would become an electronic sliding door so that you don't have to have hand contact with the door.
Okay.
Similar to what we have when we go back where the copiers are and things like that?
Okay. The Civic Center Monument Reader Sign? That's mounted to the wall currently, is it not?
It's the sign that's right out here. This old sign that was probably constructed at the same time that the Civic Center was constructed.
The very long one.
Yeah. It's obsolete, doesn't provide any data. This would be the only electronic data board sign that we have to get information out to the commuting public.
All right. The reason why I'm just asking these questions is the price tag for each of these just kind of set me back a little bit, the sticker shock effect. So we'll get rid of this Montclair one.
Yes.
Do an electronic one.
Correct.
With rotating messages and all that.
Absolutely.
Similar to what I, well, most other cities do.
Like City of Upland, Euclid.
Okay. Yeah. At Upland City Hall, right. Right. Okay. I know there was a battle over there at the high school.
Although this will be newer technology, you'll be much more pleased with the result of this.
That's what I was hoping. I'd rather it be clear and images.
Oh, this will be like a television monitor.
Okay, that's great. Now, well, that said, I guess we can have this discussion later when we get across that bridge. Let's make sure that it is as much as possible tamper-proof and not graffitied or messed with. But now, the Memorial Garden Courtyard, we're talking right out here, is that because of the, when we had those winds in October of last year knocking down the monument statue? We're talking about replacing that circular design, is that?
The whole area would be redesigned to facilitate events there. For example, the Memorial Day, to create a nicer environment for those sorts of activities and to create a greater opportunity to introduce social distancing and other types of activities that respond to, or improvements that respond to COVID.
Well, just bear in mind, in the event that, well, knowing that we have those Memorial Day events there, I've always thought it odd with that circular planner there. I think it kind of takes away from seating and whatnot, and it is a little bit cumbersome in my opinion, but anyhow, we can cross that bridge later. The installation, page 51, installation of automatic ADA sliding door at Fire Station 151. Now, that station has the steps to get into the main lobby. Are we looking at perhaps eliminating those steps altogether and redoing the entryway there?
That wasn't part of the consideration, is that if that's a concern, we can certainly look at it.
Well, I would think that for an ADA sliding glass door, we would have in mind those that are wheelchair-bound.
Well, there may have to be a ramp that's constructed if that's the case. I presume the deputy chief is here, or the chief as well can address that.
They're actually talking about the doorway. Already has. Can you hear me?
Go ahead and repeat yourself, sir.
They're actually talking about the doorway that actually already has the ADA ramp that comes to it that's on the north side of the building.
Okay, facing, facing Moreno or Arrow?
Facing Arrow, yes. It's, if anybody was coming up there to contact personnel at the fire department, they would park in the rear area, and then they would come up through that particular access point, not the actual front one.
That said, the facility, now that restrictions have been lifted through the state and whatnot, the building itself is open to public traffic, if you will, presently, correct?
It is, yes.
Okay, although it probably is minimal, I suspect, at the time.
It is minimal. The door is still kept secure for access into the facility, but it is still open for the public to come up there.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And if you could, the other items that just caught my attention with the price tag, the exterior painting, siding, roof improvements of buildings at Civic Center, when was the last time we actually tended to those matters?
It's probably been 20 years plus that Civic Center was painted, so it's long overdue. If you walk around, you can see the paint chipping, eroding away. You can see all of the metalwork is rusting. It needs to be done.
No, I agree with you. I was just asking as to how far back we had gone. Freedom Plaza artwork, now, I thought we had that Freedom Plaza artwork. Obviously, it's right by the tent in Montavista area. Where are we anticipating on the Civic Center campus where that would be, where is it going to go?
It was to be relocated, I believe, right here where the tree is in the walkway up to the back of this, off the parking lot into the city hall building. There's a tree that just never really took in that little improvement area that is just to the west of the sidewalk.
Okay. And then the, at the police station, the repair and polish terrazzo flooring, are we talking the main entrance where the infamous leak is? Is that?
Well, we, the backside of the police station where you come in off the parking area in the backside, there's a water seepage that continually has eroded to the flooring, and this will address that. Of course, we still need to identify the water source, but that's a longer-term issue.
Yes, and I understand there's other issues involving that, so I won't get into that. All right, I think you've answered that. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one really quick question. On page 56, when we talked about traffic, this, I think this is going to be an easy question. I just want to make sure that as part of the traffic calming, we're talking about the Ramona Roundabout?
Well, we are, but the Ramona Roundabout actually is going to be covered by a grant that we received from the state, about $750,000 grant.
Nice.
And we're already in the design stage for that. So that will be, now, at this point, that would be separate from the lease revenue bonds, because we did receive the grant.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay. Mayor Protenru.
Turn this on. Is, one of the questions I have, it gets into a little bit on page 56. We're looking at a lot of issues dealing with roads, pavement rehabilitation, safe routes to school, et cetera. Have we given consideration to, I call them demand lights, other people call them, I forget if you have a name they use for it, but the demand lights, because in every research, all the research I've done, it shows the improved traffic efficiency, reduced rear-end collisions, and actually, you find more compliance with the speed limit. collisions, and actually you find more compliance with the speed limit. And I, you know, we had our consultant, what, two years ago, and he met over here, and I mentioned, and he said, yes, demand lights are wonderful. I think it would really help. I drive Arrow Highway every morning and every night. During the pandemic, I wasn't working, but I am again. And people, you know, they don't follow the lights correctly. An example, tonight I was on the, uh, on Arrow, and there was a black vehicle in front of me, and, you know, they're just stop, 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 they're not following what the lights are, they pull out, stop, pull out, stop. Demand lights would at least get some efficiency, people wouldn't hesitate worrying about whether they're going to make the light or not. You wouldn't have people speeding across because, oh, I'm, I'm not going to make the light. So I think we really need to give consideration to that. I know there's a lot of hesitancy, but I don't see downside to them. And I'm not worried about what our neighbors think in other cities, if they don't have them, the traffic backs up in their city, then they need to go and get demand lights.
Okay, so there are a couple of issues going on here with the signalization. One is that the county requires that the various cities have a coordinated signalization program within their respective cities, and Montclair actually has the highest level of achievement as it relates to the coordination, so that when you're traveling down, for example, Central Avenue, you're not going to hit every red light, you will try to hit every, you will try to, when you come to an intersection, hit green lights, at least from Mission Boulevard to the I-10 freeway. Sometimes the systems fail and you have to have them come in and reprogrammed, but right now, Montclair still is the leader of all of the cities in the county as far as its success rate in achieving that level of coordination. There's another effort going on right now. The county has received approximately $424 million in coronavirus fiscal relief funds from the federal government, and they're asking that the cities in the various districts get together and come up with some regional plans as it relates to using that money, because it has to be done on a regional basis, and provide some level of coordination between different technology elements. And one of them that they are looking at is the signalization program that Councilmember Ru are speaking of, so that's one issue that we will be looking at. Another one is to consider broadband outreach throughout the respective communities. Third one is to do the cameras at the various intersections along major boulevards for public safety-related purposes. So, for example, if there's a crime in your community and the individual goes from one community to the next, they can potentially track an individual through this camera system. So these are things that we are just now starting to talk about with the county. In fact, I just sent out an email to all of the departments today to put their ideas together in relation to these sorts of regional programs. So while we may be doing a local effort, hopefully the county's going to put money towards doing a regional effort that will allow us to achieve better coordination amongst the various cities as far as it relates to traffic signalization, so we can ultimately get to the point where people don't have to stop at every signal as they're going through the various cities.
And, and one of the things you, you talked about, the county has their own standard, that's wonderful, if you only share lines with cities in the county. We share east-west with another county, and there are still problems. I mean, we, we should be able to put in demand lights and not worry about what the county wants, we need to worry about moving our own people. I drive Central Avenue a lot, and to me, it seems like after about two cars, it turns red again. You have these new stop-start cars, I think they're atrocious, but they're out there. You put your foot on the brake, the car stops, you put your foot on the gas, it starts up again. That's a hesitation that can cause problems. On top of that, you have an increase in large truck-based vehicles, which are torqued very differently than cars, it takes them longer to get through that light. And I just think it, it, I, I drive these streets all the time, as all of you do, and I think when you're having two cars going through a green light and it's backing up, Central and Palo Verde, drive that on certain nights of the week. If you're traveling westbound on Palo Verde, especially where State of Brothers is, those, those, uh, that traffic backs up. And I'm not, you know, I understand we're doing freeway rehabilitation, but we need to start really thinking about moving traffic through the city. And, you know, hopefully we can look at a grant for some of that, because I'm not the only one complaining, a lot of residents complain about the traffic lights.
Well, and you are correct, because Montclair is adjacent to Los Angeles County, we have different impacts in our community. Unfortunately, we are required by the San Bernardino County Nexus Master Plan to follow their guidance as it relates to coordinating of traffic signals. We don't have that sort of, uh, plan from Los Angeles County that affects our community because we're not under their jurisdiction, but perhaps we do need to look at tighter coordination between the counties so that we can achieve the kind of standard that you're talking about.
Because, you know, it's almost as if San Bernardino County is saying to us, you can't put in demand lights that are based on your traffic. Our traffic patterns are different from Colton, they're different from Eau Capa, they're different from Barstow, and I just want to see us move traffic through here to reduce rear-end collisions, to have more speed compliance and more efficiency with traffic. All, all the reading I've done on it shows that that's just what happens with demand lights, and, and I don't think any resident wants to be in a situation where they waited a light, it turns green, and they're the third car, so now they've got to wait through another rotation. Anyway.
Well, thank you, obviously, uh, it, the, the opportunity from the lease revenue bond and also from the, uh, the, uh, the 3.2 million dollars from the first round of the stimulus money are opportunities for the city of Montclair. I'm happy to hear that possibility, we can use some of the, the American Relief Act funds for, for cameras, intersections, I'm assuming also cameras of parks, I'm, I'm assuming? I mean, not. Well, that would, that would be our funding within the city, but as far as the streets, because that would be a coordinated effort between cities, yes, that could lose county money.
Yeah, that is something I have, I have been thinking about doing, and been talking to chief about that, so I think that's been, I'd like to have a discussion, but nevertheless, I know that in August, we're going to deal with both the pension obligation bond and the, and the improvement bond in August in terms of issuance, and then I believe at the same time, or sometime a little past August, city council will sit down, will staff, we're going to go through projects, am I correct? We'll discuss the projects, so we'll discuss a priori of projects that we want to do, and then from that, and I guess that'll be phased out, we'll have phase one be for one fiscal year, and then the next fiscal year will be a phase two of, of accomplishing projects with one, one issuance, one bond issuance of the $40 million. And then the third component, I believe, is that, is it going to be August when staff will come back and discuss the, the American Relief Act funds and how those, again, how those funds could be allocated?
Yes, on or about the same time.
About the same time, okay, so there are, there are three things that will be coming back to the council, that includes discussing projects, improvement projects or projects or fund allocations. The C I P projects, I know we talked about it earlier today, but the, the C I P, you, you're expecting that probably the later summer, one may have a C I P, uh, five years, was it five years or 10 years of projects?
Well, the, we, because of the transition between public works directors, I have to provide the new public works, works director an opportunity to have his input on that.
In terms of a lot of the capital projects, we're speaking now, we're talking about funding it through the bonds, obviously we have tax, we have measure right funds, we have other sources of funds, we have the Central Avenue budget, bridge and other projects going on, but I'm, I'm assuming a lot of the capital projects will come out of bonds.
Yes.
Speed improvements, especially.
And as you pointed out, that has to come to the city council, because we do have to have a project list as part of the bond measure, and it would probably be a good idea that we coordinate both the C I P and that bond infrastructure together so that we can assign the different funding to the different, uh, funding sources.
Okay, so then this council, we'll have a job later this year to figure out how to allocate funds for projects. And then, um, you know, obviously, I've been talking about traffic calming projects, you know, trying to warn people or traffic, trying to reduce traffic, traffic incidents, if I call it, I know Councilmember Johnson talked about Howard and Ramona, but I've, I've been talking about trying to put up, you know, for example, at Howard and Ramona, we have these blinking red lights around the stop signs, and I know at another location in Montclair, there was a blinking yellow light, lets you know you're coming close to a T-intersection, and I really like to see more of those improvements take place here in Montclair at, and I know we have studies are done, so in those areas of the studies have identified that required some form of traffic safety improvement.
Yes.
So, um, haven't forgot about that. You know, going back to the county pool fund and I know there's legislation, I'm assuming staff will stay on top of that, so if there is a serious piece of bill that's moving forward that the city council will be made aware of, and then that means we need to go out and lobby and talk to our local legislators, and I realize the cities will be all over the place on it, but I think it's important that we, we, we stay on top of that and then keep us informed.
Oh, absolutely, the, the majority of the cities in California obviously would not benefit from the legislative change, I, I would expect that there will be a massive response by cities to not do that.
Okay.
But I also do have to point out that there are cities that already have exclusions and are already collecting and keeping the funds for themselves, particularly up in the, just, the Bay Area, San Jose, for example, retains all of the sales taxes produced by the big tech industries operating in their community. In our area, Ontario is the big city that is pushing for legislative change for the fulfillment and distribution dollars to stay within their town.
Um, the, I know we have $10,000 for the splash pad for twenty, 2022, is there, is there a reason why we can't do it this summer, in July and August?
Because of the restrictions related to the pandemic and not knowing when they were necessarily going to change. We had projected keeping it closed for the summer.
Okay. All right. And then one more question, and I've talked to staff regarding business rent relief assistance, and, uh, I want to make sure staff, um, talk to our, our Montclair businesses, determine what their needs are because of the pandemic, you know, are they behind rent or something else? Because I would like to use some of this, some of this recovery funds to assist them. I know there's other sources of funds or other recovery funds from the county or from small businesses association or assistant, uh, agency, excuse me. And I think it's important that we determine our needs and there's cities where we can help them out a little bit. So that's another project, I'd like to, I'd like to be able to have that discussion, hopefully before Labor Day.
And, and that is an option, but I do also need to remind you that the county and the city are already working together in relation to expansive efforts related to providing the funding assistance to businesses. The state of California is already considering massive bailout for rent relief for residents.
Right.
And also there are state programs related to funding for businesses as well. So through an economic development program, we have already been doing that level of coordination, reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce, reaching out to the businesses, putting them in contact with these various funding opportunities that are available. We would certainly expand on that, particularly now that even more money is becoming available through the county, through the state, through the federal government. So the only thing that we suggest at this point is that give us the opportunity to make certain that we have clarity as to the funding that is coming available through all these other sources, because it may not be necessary that our share of the fiscal relief fund be dedicated to that, put it towards other purposes, if there are plenty of dollars already available.
What I'm asking now is, can we at least talk to some of our small businesses? I know, and one thing I'm more, maybe, maybe more focused will be the restaurants, and just get an idea, report back to city council, give us an idea of what it looks like, what their needs are, are they, are they gaining the assistance they need, or something that the city of Montclair needs to step in to assist them. I know some other cities are doing it or are thinking about doing it, and I'd like to be, be in the position to do the same thing.
We certainly can, and actually, the economic development program in the city has already been doing that sort of outreach, and we can continue collecting that information and provide a report back to the city council.
Right, thank you. All right, let's go on to the, is, more comments here? You have a comment?
I, I did.
Okay, go ahead.
Just very quickly, because I was out of the room.
Let's go with Councilman Lopez first, then Mayor Protenru.
Um, Mr. City Manager, I piggybacking on what Mayor Dutre just inquired regarding the splash pad, um, there, there is a large group of residents on social media who are quite upset that res, uh, cities such as Chino already have theirs in operation, there's nothing locally for them. I noticed you, you did just state the pandemic concerns. What possibly is there, I know that restrictions have been listed via the state, the county has virtually lifted all restrictions. What can we possibly say is of coronavirus concern to justify the continual shutting down of the splash pad? I, it, I, I'd rather see it open, I, I just do not see there being any detriment to its use. I do have additional one or two, three more points, but I, I wanted to bring that up, and I failed to when I asked about the other items. Can we expedite it as opposed to waiting to next year? Can, I mean, I know weather's going to be changing soon, can we limit it to maybe, I don't know, I'm just throwing a number out there, 10 kids at a time, if it puts you at ease much more easily? I welcome your comments.
Well, the, the issue about the splash pad is multi-fold. One, it, it takes approximately a month to a month and a half to even start the splash pad up, so it wouldn't even be available to the public until sometime in middle of August. And then children are back in school, which is why the splash pad typically closed down before the, what, holiday, Labor Day? Yeah, the Labor Day holiday, because the kids are back in school, splash pad isn't getting any significant use at that point in time. So we would be pushing against that envelope anyway. It has to go through a recharging process at this point in time, because it has been shut down for two years, it would probably have to go through a full evaluation of all of the equipment, it probably needs a lot of equipment being replaced, and I only say this based on experience, on an annual basis, we have to replace lots of components on the splash pad, simply because the parts wear out, they don't last very long. The company that we deal with doesn't retain parts, they have to manufacture, and again, because it's been shut down for two years, I would expect that it would probably take, if not the six weeks, probably a couple of months to get it recharged and back in operational. So that just puts us further out. So I don't know that it would be worth our while to even venture to try and open it up this year. Again, the reason why we didn't anticipate is because we didn't know exactly when the state would necessarily reopen, and what, if they did, what would be their provisions related to children in enclosed areas, whether they're indoors or outdoors. Even right now, the state hasn't issued final decisions as it relates to children returning back to school. Schools are obviously planning on reopening in the fall, but they don't have the guidance yet related to what is being expected of them, and then there, of course, there is the new strain of the virus that they expect to be hitting the United States in significant numbers later on this summer, and the fact that children aren't subject to vaccination at right now. So you have children that are unvaccinated that are using the splash pad, and they may be a carrier of the virus, and while it is a environment that uses chlorine, that doesn't necessarily stop the exchange of the virus between, physical interaction between children, it certainly does impact it related to them obtaining it through the water because of the chlorine amount in there. So those are the issues that I think really are why we've decided that opening it up this year probably goes against the grain, and if the council does want us to do it, again, I still would tell you that it probably is not going to be until probably September before it would be up and operational, and by then, the weather changing, the kids back in school, it probably would not be a direction that would serve great purpose at this point in time. You know, far be it for me to say how other cities have responded to the virus, but I will say- how other cities have responded to the virus, but I will say that other cities have treated it far differently. Many of them, in fact, the one city that you mentioned, I believe, was already in live city council meetings in January because of their regard for the virus and how they saw it. So cities regarded it differently, reacted to it differently, and in Montclair, because we had one of the highest transmission rates, one of the highest death rates, and appeared to suffer more adversely from the virus in other communities, we operated from a very cautious perspective and continued with that cautious approach as we moved into the summer. So those are really the reasons why we chose to wait until 2022 before reopening the splash pad.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple items. I know we got more to go into with the presentation. I fully support the mayor's concept of some form of business relief for business owners in Montclair, and I would support the effort to look into that and bringing back a program for us to implement and institute that. Regarding the list of projects needed for the infrastructure bond, may I suggest as an idea that each council member perhaps submit, it could be on a formal letter that staff wants to create, or we can just put it on letterhead and submit formally our top five projects we'd like to see included, and obviously without coordination amongst ourselves. And if there is overlap, great, but nonetheless, at least the five of us have input as to our top priorities, so we can go back to our respective constituencies in the community and get input and bring back what we view as top five priorities to be included amongst the list. With respect to the reclaimed water pipe extension to North Montclair, it sounds like the city may be interested in getting into the water business, if you will. I would, obviously, I would suspect staff would look into, well, I would operate under the assumption that Montevista Water has water rights here to the city first and foremost, unless I'm mistaken. But nonetheless, I wouldn't want us going into reclaimed water and there being there a turf war with Montevista Water. I know that might be difficult for at least two of us on this body, given the relationship with other board members on that board. But nonetheless, I just, I'd like it to be an amicable decision or situation, and nothing is seen as hostile. But at the same time, I would hope Montevista would not stop us or impede us in any way.
Yeah, and we'll work with, if this is a project that the city council wants to do, we'll work with Montevista Water District. I think we've already done one recycling line. You know, we have, I think we have a contract with Montevista Water District in terms of recycling waters. Technically, the water belongs, the recycling water belongs to the city of Montclair, since it comes from sewage, and then the Montevista Water District, I believe, purchases it or has the right to use recycling water for their uses. So let's move on to, I appreciate everybody's comments. I think, are we done?
I just, I was out of the room when we were talking about the situation of warehouses. I would concur that it's a bad situation. At the same, and I want something in our favor and all the smaller cities around us that have this same problem. The situation exists in California as well, and I will personally look in the next legislative session, seeing if there's something that can be done. We have a car dealer in town, as we do. We have several of them, not just up here near the 10, we have on Hope Boulevard. Whether they're new or used isn't the issue. We do not receive the sales tax from that unless they are somebody from our city who is buying that car.
The transactions and use tax.
Transactions and use tax. I'd like to see, if there's a way with that transactions and use tax legislatively, we'd have to do this through the state. There wouldn't be a way that a city could keep a portion of that where the car is purchased. So they live in 90210, they purchase a car here in 91763. If we could keep a portion of that sales, transactions and use tax, we have things that happen. They're using our roads to get here. If something were to happen at that dealership, it's our police and our fire or our public works who would respond. And I just think it would make a lot of sense if we could get a portion of that. Now, it may not be a lot of money, but it's something that is in line with the warehouse situation. Cities are looking to keep all the money from the warehouse. Well, that isn't fair either. So I just, next year I might just look into that on my own and see what they're, but if we could keep a portion of that transaction use tax, it might be, I'm not saying all of it.
Well, as it relates to the transactions and use tax, if a vehicle is going to be registered outside of the city of Montclair, they don't pay a transactions and use tax. So the only time that you pay it is if you are from a city that has a transactions and use tax. So if I lived in Montclair and I bought a car in Claremont that doesn't have a transactions and use tax, I would still have to pay the transactions and use tax to the dealership in Claremont, and they would report it back to Montclair, and so the dollars would come back to us. So you have to live in a city that has a transactions use tax in order to pay it.
That's what I didn't understand. That was the missing part of the equation. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, next section.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, now we'll discuss general fund special purpose funds. Special purpose funds established to address current and future liabilities, programs, projects, goals, requiring a commitment of funds not incorporated into the general fund operating budget. The CalPERS and post-employment liabilities fund retains $2,500,000 for CalPERS and post-employment liabilities. Technology account retains $286,251 for technology acquisitions. The self-insurance fund retains $850,000 for city-related self-insurance retention liabilities. The building maintenance fund retains $600,000 for building maintenance. An anticipated personnel adjustment fund retains $700,000 for unanticipated personnel-related expenditures. The equipment replacement fund retains $1,315,091 for equipment acquisitions, reflects a reduction of $346,975 towards fiscal year 2021-22 capital outlay purchases, and a transfer in of $300,000 from the general fund operating budget for a net effect of negative $46,975. The retiree medical liability retains $560,000 for other post-employment benefits. Contingency account retains $125,283 for unanticipated expenditures. The UAL POB amortization service fund retains $558,661 after a proposed fiscal year 2021-22 transfer in. The total estimated all special purpose funds is $7,495,286.
And just for your information on that retiree medical liability, the $560,000 that is retained, the actual amount owed is about $13 million, based on the last actuarial study we had on our op-ebbs. We obviously don't fund that. We fund it on an ongoing basis, an as-you-go basis. So that's why that doesn't have 13 million in, plus we don't have 13 million to put in it.
And we'll move on to the 2014 issue of lease revenue bonds, payment period fiscal year 2014 to 2045. Debt service 2014 issue of lease revenue bond, issue amount $45 million, purpose, de fees balance of the 2005 issue, remaining balance approximately $22 million used for police facility and youth and senior center projects. The 2014 issue of lease revenue bond funds have been substantially exhausted. Annual debt service approximately $2.6 million through fiscal year 2044-45. Funding source for annual debt service, general fund revenue $1,840,087, residual redevelopment property tax revenues $750,000. Projected fiscal year 2021-22 residual revenue $1,595,000. Based on the projected health of the general fund revenue budget, the city manager proposes removing the commitment of residual redevelopment property tax revenue to increase the capacity of the economic development fund to finance economic development operations, including the restoration of funds for affordable housing projects.
And this is an important issue here, because you will recall back when we had the redevelopment agency, there was a legislative requirement that we had the 20% set aside rule, where all of the property taxing increment that came into the redevelopment agency, 20% of that was set aside for affordable housing projects. When the state of California eliminated redevelopment agencies, we also lost not only the economic development side of it, but the ability to afford funding affordable housing projects. So as you know, Montclair went a different direction than many other cities. We chose to try and continue to establish an economic development fund that would allow us to assist businesses and do other types of economic development in the community. And now we would like to add on to that, this affordable housing project, our fund, where we would put in this share of the property tax increment that we received from the former redevelopment agency, so that we have a funding basis for starting to assist with affordable housing projects like we did in the past. For example, the San Antonio Gateway projects that were developed in the southern area of the city, all of that was done with the cooperation of the redevelopment agency utilizing its 20% set aside fund. So hopefully, this will give us the capacity to start doing that again.
So I know we're at the end of this one, but just make sure I understand. So we currently have $845,000 in his proposed budget going into economic development. That's coming from the general fund. Or actually, that's coming from the tax increment. Am I correct, Ed?
The $750,000 that goes right now to pay for the 2014 issue in addition to the transactions and use tax money. That $1.8 million was originally designated as part of major F money, but major F is part of general fund, so I'm calling it general fund revenue here. And then $750,000 was contributed as part of the property tax increment.
Right.
We're now saying, with the health of the general fund, the general fund should pay for the entire cost of paying off the 2014 issue, and we can return that $750,000 on an annual basis going forward to the economic development fund and designate that money to start building up in affordable housing funds.
So is there about $1.6 million from the former redevelopment fund, the tax increment fund?
No, right now we have accumulated about $6.3 million, $6.4 million in the economic development fund.
Yeah, I know we have, I know the economic development fund, but we're adding $845,000 to the economic development fund. Where's that, what's the source of that money? Is that $845,000?
You mean the $750,000?
No, 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 no.
Well, but we're projected to receive a total residual revenue of $1,595,000.
That's what I'm talking about. So you're taking the residual receipts we're going to receive from the former redevelopment agency, and all that money now will go towards the economic development fund?
Yes.
Okay. And then you're saying that we can use now some of that money in this for housing projects, doesn't necessarily have to be affordable housing projects, that they're not restricted in terms of how those things are used.
No, no, we're not restricted because it's our money, it's not, it's general fund money, it's not redevelopment.
Technically, general fund money, but we're designating this money for economic development activity, including for housing.
Right, correct. And we feel that this is important as well, because as you know, the housing authority is, it's not deficient, but it's not experiencing an increase in annual revenues, because more money goes out than comes in. And this will, this will ameliorate that concern.
Yeah, okay. And then going back to the, going back to the reserves or the designated reserves, you're creating a new reserve called the UAL POB amortization service fund, which you talked about earlier.
That would be our recommendation if you approve the POBs.
So we do the POBs, there's about a $1.2 million savings each year.
Based on that baseline, yes.
That $1.2 million will go into this fund every year.
Yes.
You know, accumulate, and then, okay. All right, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, you say, you know, any of us who drive up and down the street, we can see our housing stock that's starting to decline. And so I am delighted beyond measure to see that we're going to address that. It's not going to all be addressed tomorrow, but year to year, we can do a little bit at a time, like we used to do when we had the redevelopment funds, when we painted people's houses, when we helped seniors with locks, when we get, we're able to find them other revenue sources to do their roofs, et cetera. And just because we lost redevelopment, that doesn't mean those things don't still need to be done. So I am really delighted to see this money being put into economic development. Thank you for that.
Thank you, appreciate that. And I want to point out that Montclair is, as far as I know, is the only city that did that with its property tax increment that came back to us after the elimination of redevelopment.
Okay, reorganization element.
Yes.
I'll be back.
Fiscal year 2021-22 reorganization element. Duty of the city manager to recommend to the city council reorganization of offices, positions, departments, programs, or units in the interest of the efficient, effective, and economical conduct of city business. Reorganization typically uses downsizing or rightsizing to re-engineer organizational structure. In recent years, the city has downsized, reduced personnel to maintain balanced budgets during successive years of economic recession. Fiscal year 2021-22 proposed budget recommends restoring positions recently lost to the pandemic and other economic factors, improving working conditions, reengineering departments. In the city council, city attorney, advisory bodies, no recommended changes. In the office of the city manager, establish information technology division as a separate department. Appoint IT manager to director of information technology. Total net cost $64,640 at step E. This amount is included in the budget.
Okay, so I want to point out, when we go through each one of these positions, those dollars don't mean that that's the impact this year. It only means when that employee impacted gets to step E. So it's typically a three to four-year process before you get to the full expenditure of that amount of money.
Also, in the office of the city manager, reclassify senior IT specialist classification as IT analyst. Appoint two senior IT specialist incumbents to IT analyst classification. Total net cost $35,116 at step E, included in the budget. Administrative services human resources department, no recommended changes. Community development department, establish assistant code enforcement manager classification. Reclassify code enforcement supervisor to assistant code enforcement manager position. Total net cost $41,583 at step E, included in the budget. Reclassify senior code enforcement officer to code enforcement supervisor. Total net cost $10,504 at step E, included in the budget. Economic development housing department, reestablish economic development housing department. Establish director of economic development housing classification. Appoint senior management analyst to director of economic development housing. Total net cost $88,293 at step E, included in the budget. Establish economic services and housing manager classification. Reclassify economic development coordinator/housing associate to economic services and housing manager position. Total net cost $36,244 at step E, included in the budget. Retitle information relations officer classification as economic promotion coordinator classification. Restore funding for economic promotion coordinator classification. Recruit to fill the position. Total net cost $81,670 at step E, included in the budget. Retain an economic development fund annual allocation previously diverted to make payment on 2014 issue of lease revenue bonds. Retention restoration amount $750,000. Fiscal year 2021-22 total retention amount $6,175,415. Human services department, reclassify administrative analyst to senior management analyst. Total net cost $18,257 at step E, included in the budget. Public safety department, police, restore funding for five frozen police officer positions. Total net cost $600,870 at step E, included in the budget. Upon retirement of public safety administrative services supervisor, reclassify to police sergeant. Total net cost $24,090 at step E. This is not included in the budget as retirement date of public safety administrative services supervisor is undetermined. Add two police dispatcher positions. Total net cost $171,500 at step E. This is included in the budget. Public safety department, fire, implement five-year labor agreement. Total net cost $1.3 million at step E. Net cost of the agreement for fiscal year 2021-22 is $73,662 at step E. This is not included in the budget. Public works department, establish senior maintenance worker classification. Recruit in-house to fill positions. Total net cost $224,919 at step E, included in the budget. Restore graffiti abatement worker classification. Total net cost $69,364 at step E, included in the budget. Total net cost $69,364 at step E, included in the budget. Reorganize maintenance worker classification to include eight full-time positions and four part-time positions. Total net cost $10,303 at step E, included in the budget.
And for those positions where it said that it was not included in the budget, it's only because we didn't at the time have the ability to put it in the budget at the time of preparation because we didn't know what the outcomes were going to be. And those dollars will come out of that unanticipated personnel, $700,000 that's in that special purpose fund, similar to negotiated salary increases that are yet to come that we don't know about with bargaining groups.
Okay, so now we will do the proposed budget conclusion.
We'll stop right there for a second. There are any questions on the reorganization element, Mr. Rue, Mayor Portman Rue?
Yes, on page 74. I'm wondering why we are going to recruit and have somebody as an employee for this position? When there are a lot of firms that do this, we could outsource this. We wouldn't have the PERS, we wouldn't have the medical, we wouldn't have to worry about any of that. And these companies, they're companies that specialize just in doing this, they're consulting firms. I'd be far more comfortable with that.
Well, this was a position under a different title that was approved by the city council as a public relations person.
Right.
A year and a half ago, and we are simply retitling the position and moving it under an economic development department. The position will do far more than just public relations. The position will actually monitor change and be responsible for all of the city's social media accounts. It will be responsible for assisting in establishing the various meetings that economic development personnel will attend. And then, of course, there is the court ruling that stipulates that as it relates to contract positions, unless there is a clear separation between the agency and how you direct the employee. In other words, if you direct that consultant at all, then that individual is treated as an employee of the organization, and that individual will be allowed to have Cal-PERS retirement benefits and other benefits provided by the agency. So given that this position would be very much controlled by the intent and purposes and needs of the organization, it simply was a better choice to bring it in-house.
I just, I, I still would prefer to see this as a outsourced function. I think we're building up our PERS liability even more with this. That's, that's just my opinion. I wasn't in favor of it when we had it as a public, public relations position. I voted against it, and I'm not in favor of this. I just do not think we need this at this point. I think we can go to a private company. Lots of cities have private firms or consulting firms doing this type of work, and they're just fine with it.
Mr. Lopez.
Yeah, quick question, Mr. City Manager. I know we had a meeting earlier this afternoon, and I asked some of my questions regarding the reorganization and the creation of some of these positions with respect to IT in the economic development department. Now, you stated that the payment and benefits totals that are listed are for step E classifications that could happen four years out.
Yes.
But you state here that they're included in the budget now. What is the purpose? I'm a little confused. If an employee does, obviously, if we implement this plan, the employee does not see those benefits until 2025, but why are we budgeting for that change in the budget now?
Well, no, so if you, if a position is approved, then the employee that moves into that position receives whatever the initial wage adjustment and benefit impacts would be.
At step A?
Well, most likely it would be step A. It depends on the salary that you create for a particular position. If it's not necessarily, for example, in a hierarchical ladder structure, then the wage doesn't necessarily have to move an employee from where he's at, from his or her step E, into a step A. It could be a step B, it could be a C, it could be a D, it could even be an E. It just depends on the nature of the position that you're creating, the employee that's moving into that position. So what it means here is that the dollar amount tells you what the full economic impact will be over the course of the change from the position that we've identified will be moving into the new position. So by the time that that employee gets to step E, not including any annual salary increases, that would be the economic impact. So when it says that it's included in the budget, only that portion of the first year of that four-year transition, the movement from A step to B to C to D E, is included in this year's budget. So for example, if it is $40,000, then the first year you would probably see something in the neighborhood of $6,000 that is budgeted for that particular employee. And then in the subsequent years, the additional salary increase for moving into the step B will be included in the next year's budget, and then the following year C, the following year D, and the following year E.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe the comment there. So you don't have any changes in the city council, city attorney, offices, city council and city attorney offices. The changes mentioned the office of the city manager. Administrative services, no recommended changes. Community development department, that would now include a total of six code enforcement officers, including the two either supervisor or manager as part of this reorganization. And then economic development housing department now will have a staff of three. It's proposed here, director and manager, and then this general employee. Human services department has one. And a question I have for human services, and I know we talked about the splash pad earlier, but I believe the human services, the after-school programs have already, well, the summer programs have already started. After-school will start in August, and I know we're out recruiting for positions, so I'm assuming you're still recruiting for people for the after-school programs. And then eventually, we're going to have recreation programs, including indoor use. And I'm assuming that under the current pandemic state guidelines, we can't do indoor basketball yet or indoor volleyball or kids, none of that yet.
Well, yes, we can, but we need to get the staffing first. That's a big part of it right now.
And we can, so if we adopt this budget, can this occur, if we get the staffing, can this occur as soon as this fall?
As, well, for those kinds of activities, when she can get the staffing on board, yes.
Okay, so then as early as this fall, we could have the meaning of the recreation programs moving forward as long as we have staffing.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then I go to the police department, and so I know we're going to bring back the five positions, the patrol positions, along with two dispatchers, which are brand new, and then, of course, the sergeant position, as spoken. And then I believe that when I talk to the chief, and you don't have to come up with a chief unless I'm saying something incorrect, but we have a number of people who are either getting ready to go to the academy, recruitments, and so by creating five positions, sounds like that we could have these positions filled probably this calendar year.
Well...
Through the recruits, the academies.
The current calendar year or the?
I'm talking about the...
This calendar year, I'm sorry, yes.
The first half of the fiscal year, excuse me.
Yes, he has, I believe, five, maybe six people going into the academy, and then there's a lateral recruitment going on.
Right.
And if he, if the chief is successful through the lateral recruitment, in addition to the academies, they may be at full staffing.
Okay, so the goal here, if we get the full staffing, is obviously to bring back motor traffic, motor traffic, CSU, the crime suppression unit, I'm not sure of investigations, and he's more detectives, and, but those areas will also enhance.
My understanding is if he can achieve full staffing, those are his objectives.
That's the goal for the next fiscal year. Okay. And then, okay, fire department, and so we have the federal grant that we applied for for the six positions. We'll see what happens there. And then we just talked about the apparatus, apparatus units there. And then public works, and I know we're hiring for a director, a manager, public works manager, and an assistant engineer, and it sounds like we are now in interviews for all three of those positions.
Yes.
Okay. And then, so I will say this, that one of my goals has been through Measure L is to get more boots on the ground, and get, gain more staff in our streets as far as fire and public safety, police, and public works and code enforcement. You know, one of the areas that I think we've done a good job, and I think that requires more resources is homeless, and I know code enforcement's done a good job there in that area, but I also know that we need, we need resources because we still have to deal with other code enforcement issues like property maintenance issues, front yard landscaping, graffiti. So I'm happy to see that. So we are now to the proposed, to the conclusion of the general fund.
Yes. For the fiscal year 2021-22 general fund operating budget, it was a successful and balanced budget. Utilizes a number of funds and strategies to achieve balance. Improved sales tax revenues combined with increased transactions and use tax earnings generated by Measure F and the recently voter-approved Measure L contribute to the city's ability to recover in the post-COVID-19 pandemic era. Reductions have been made to requests from each department. However, these reductions were typically based on expectations that certain services will continue to be impacted by the pandemic. It restores most of the positions frozen, laid off during fiscal year 2021 due to the economic impacts of the pandemic. Personnel, $28,988,333 for all funds personnel services, which is 64.8% of total operating appropriations for fiscal year 2021-22. $23,663,705 for general fund personnel services, which is 73.8% of the general fund operating budget. This provides for 189 full-time employment positions. Capital outlay, $38,500 for a police department investigations vehicle funded through the equipment replacement fund. $178,475 for three police department patrol vehicles, also funded through the equipment replacement fund. $7,500 for a fire department ME 152 pre-connect hose bed modification funded through the general fund. $32,650 for fire department forcible entry and ventilation training props funded through the general fund. $53,000 for computer equipment for information technology funded through the general fund. $45,000 for a Chevy regular cab flatbed truck for public works funded through the equipment replacement fund. $80,000 for a Toro ride-on mower for public works funded by the equipment replacement fund and the park maintenance fund. $45,000 for a mobile column heavy lift equipment, heavy equipment lift for public works funded by the equipment replacement fund. Services and supplies, $13,526,900 in fiscal year 2020-21. $15,229,220 proposed for fiscal year 2021-22, a difference of $1,702,320, which is a 12.5% COVID-19 expenses reimbursement. The city has applied to the Federal Emergency Management Administration for reimbursement for eligible COVID-19 expenses. To date, $60,894 has been reimbursed from FEMA, and $171,547 is currently outstanding. This also requires still approval from FEMA for these projects. Additional $90,000 reimbursement is being prepared for submittal to FEMA. City is scheduled to receive approximately $49,886 Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant for PPE and other public safety materials and equipment. Economic development fund. The economic development fund maintains a current fund balance of $6,175,415. The fund was created after the loss of redevelopment in 2012 to establish a funding mechanism for economic development activities. Economic development funds are used to support the city's economic activities and housing programs. Economic development funds allocated toward payment on the 2014 issue of lease revenue bonds are now fully committed to the economic development fund to establish an affordable housing program fund. An affordable housing program fund will allow the city's housing authority to recover from the loss of community redevelopment agencies in 2012, including the elimination of the 20% set aside of property tax increment for affordable housing programs. So this is the end of the fiscal year 2021-22 proposed fiscal budget review presentation. And is there any other further questions before I go on to the Montclair Housing Corp?
Continue on with the Housing Corporation.
Go ahead and do that one now.
Go continue on.
Okay, so we'll do the Montclair Housing Corporation proposed budget for fiscal year 2021-22. List of Montclair Housing Corporation properties contained in Montclair Housing Corporation budget estimated fund balance July 1, 2021 is $1,767,092. Estimated revenue, rental income, $975,000, and interest income, $18,000, for a total of $2,760,092. So you can see here the administrative costs. The subtotal is $1,122,133. Assigned fund balance, long-term maintenance and repair, $1,637,959. The estimated fund balance, June 30, 2021, is $1,767,092. And the estimated fund balance at June 30, 2022 is $1,637,959. That is the end of the fiscal year 2021-22 Montclair Housing Corporation budget review presentation, and we're open for questions.
Okay, I don't see any more questions right now. So what I'm going to do is open up to the public, if there's any public comments. This include public comments just for general discussion. Do you have members of the public want to speak, Andrea?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised, and I do have a public comment card, but it's for, I'm not on the agenda.
Okay, we'll take it right now then, if not, I'm on the agenda.
Okay, so that's for Mr. Bill Kaufman.
My name is Bill Kaufman. I represent a few companies, public companies in the legal cannabis industry. I'm going to tell you who I am so you don't think I'm just a buffoon up here talking. I graduated from University of Pittsburgh with a math degree. I'm a Vietnam vet. I was four years a drill instructor at Fort Ord. Came out of the service, got my MBA, a year of law, and I worked for Mattel as their Far East Director out of Hong Kong. Made contacts and became an entrepreneur in a number of businesses. Some were very good and some were very bad. That's just the nature of the beast. But when I sold my last company, which is a solar company in Corona, I started to look around what is there coming out of the ground, and I saw this cannabis industry, which was legal at that time, so to speak, a little bit outlawish. So I looked at it, I opened up four dispensaries, one in Venice, one in Westwood, one in West Hollywood, and one in Santa Monica. Opened a manufacturing distribution company in Venice and one in Seattle. Got to be cumbersome, so I sold out, and I was approached by these companies, would you be a consultant to come to cities that we're looking at? Nobody wants to be in LA or any of those areas where you have all this skullduggery going on. You know, what we concentrated on for cities like yourselves, you say, no, we don't want any part of it. Okay, let's stay away from me. And tried to educate them to let them see that we don't promote cannabis use. We don't want anyone to, I've got seven kids and four grandchildren. I don't want them walking around smoking cannabis. That's not what we're about. I have an economic analysis I'm going to give Mikey here, who I've talked to, and he can do a distribution thereof. And the why I'm at a budget committee, that this shows at a minimum, you have a $3 million revenue, and a maximum could be significantly more than that, all legitimate, okay? We have stores that are on Colorado Boulevard, Fifth Avenue. If you go to the International Airport, there's a dispensary there. These places have guards inside of them and guards outside of them. There's no children could get close to them, and to get into it, you have to be 21. Average patient is a 42-year-old man and a 53-year-old woman. It's not, you don't have any smoking hippies or none of that stuff going on. It's a very, very, very legitimate business. They're very good partners, like in Corona. Corona, I've worked on three years. Corona passed their ordinance, they accept applications, they're analyzing applications, and they're going to distribute licenses probably mid-July. 7 million dollars in revenue, okay? And everything will be first-class legitimate. There'll be, there's no harm to your children. There's no, nobody wants anyone to come there unless they really want to be there. But I'm not here to pitch that. What I was going to do is give this to Mikey, show the revenue that can be generated out of this. I'd like to at some point in time, and Corona, their mayor and so forth, they say anytime you want us to go and talk to somebody and let you, let them know the process, they're willing to do that. I mean, not, not, everything that we do is first-class. We're in Corona, we're, we're revamping some of their Little League fields. We're revamping some of their Pop Warner fields. I mean, we are very, 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 very good partners in cities. I mean, the biggest cleanup in Venice is our cleanup on the beach. Unfortunately, we can't even get to the beach anymore. So what are you going to do? Anyways, that's all I have. I wanted to let you know who I am. You'll hear from me again. I've looked at your city for, during this pandemic, everything, everything sort of went on, on hiatus. But you're, you're sitting on a gem. You've got that 10 freeway exposure. I've been watching your Montclair Plaza transmit, what you're doing down there. I think you're doing a great job. I know you lost a lot of revenue when those big boxes closed, but you can get, this is really good, clean revenue, believe me. And it doesn't jeopardize anyone. Now, if you want us to know what jeopardizes, what we're working on, go on your internet and look at delivery to Montclair, California of cannabis. See how many people pop up. Anybody can sit in their house now, 10 kids and have some buffoon who's 21 and order what they want. And it's not tested, it's not anything. That's what we're working against, you know, because we have to pay taxes. We give, give our people vacations, we give them health insurance, we do anything anyone else does, but you can't compete with people who are just going, coming in, they're selling something for $40 and God knows what it is, but we being legitimate have to go 80. So we're working very hard to stop this damn delivering into the cities. Or they're going to have to go through hoops to get into your city. That's something we're working on. Other than that, that's it. I just want to introduce myself, you'll see me again. And I'm going to give this to Mikey and he can do what he chooses. Any questions for me?
Nope.
I do know a few of you.
Give that to Mikey and appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
I think we have another speaker.
Yes, Eleni Christensen.
Hi, welcome to sit down. That's myself, did I hear my name?
Yes.
Yes, Eleni.
I heard my name. Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members, city manager and staff, as well as my audience members. Thank you, Chief of Police. Anyone else here that I don't recognize right off the bat, Mr. Bill. And also fellow neighbors of mine that might be watching in Zoom. Uh, my name is Eleni Christensen and I am a 17-year residence of, resident of Montclair. And I am very proud to have attended today's meeting. I'm very impressed with what I've heard and I probably speak out of ignorance, quite frankly, for this being my first city council meeting in person after 17 years. I have been involved as a working mom with a beautiful family at home, as a commuter town in Montclair, passing through, going to work in construction for the 17 years in Land Empire, LA Orange County. And never really thought much of the city except tiny little city. It's everything's so close, I love it, but I gotta go to work. And I commute half an hour to an hour, to an hour and a half. My new office being in Huntington Beach. And I'm just really impressed with what I've heard, the care and concern for both everyone here that doesn't necessarily live in this tiny, beautiful city, but still cares as much as I do. So first and foremost, I want to say thank you for, um, I love that you took something out of redevelopment and put it in the general fund so we can help, um, still take care of our neighbors and make things look nice here. I think, I wish I knew about how important it was to join and be involved as a child. We should have schools come here and see and participate in government. I think that we can do something very positive with the Chamber of Commerce and get more involved with businesses here, um, so that we have more businesses sitting here and wanting to see what they can do and what the city also, I gather, wants to hear that they can do to help increase the revenue. This gentleman here, I have, I have a lot of experience, I want to say, in different avenues from institutional, commercial, residential and construction. Uh, over the last year and a half, I was unemployed and doing some consulting. I had the privilege of working in various cities and I do under, I do know the Spiegel's and, uh, uh, the Corona Chamber of Commerce, CEO and President. So I'm very familiar in Corona, that was where my former office was. I'm familiar with the supervisor there and, um, I'm familiar with, I had some consulting experience with a cannabis testing laboratory, one that has been working with the city of Anaheim, actually. And with the pandemic, I'd just like to inform everybody, or at least my eyes were opened when I found out that cities are now reconsidering cannabis into their, welcoming the idea of cannabis dispensary or something of that nature back into their cities. I have an eight-year-old daughter, I'm concerned naturally. But what I learned is something is better to be done legally than seeing my neighbor across the street for the last 17 years sell it, grow it, maybe out of his backyard. And we have cars that I don't know where they come from, coming into my little street, coming from out of state, maybe out of state, out of the city anyway, out of places. And I don't, I don't care for bringing strangers into my little neighborhood and then having kids smoke it. There's, uh, there's definitely some illegal transactions happening and how much can we possibly burden on the police? Right? To call every time someone just wants to sell somebody some pot? And he's, the city's not paying for it, he's not paying taxes, it's all a cash business. So I, I don't know everything about what you're proposing, but I think it's worth a conversation. I know that there's talks of opportunity zones and things like that as well. So I appreciate the opportunity that this gentleman was heard and I'd love to learn more about it, whether I am for or against it, I don't know yet, because I don't know everything. But, uh, I would like to finish with saying that I look forward to coming back to these meetings and engaging with all of you more and being more of an concerned citizen and learning about this beautiful town, um, that you have here for us to grow our city, grow our revenue and make it a beautiful town, not where you're just passing through, but you stop and stay a while. So with that, I look forward to seeing you again and I really appreciate sincerely everything that you do and have done and, and my votes have gone for you. So glad to see you here and thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, any other speakers?
I don't see any others with their hands raised, so I think that's it.
Okay, then we'll go back to, to the budget workshop and I'm going to ask, I can see Councilmember Lopez.
Well, Mr. Mayor, real quickly regarding the last speaker, Ms. Christensen, I believe you said? Uh, Ms. Christensen, did, with respect to the neighbor across the street from you, have you reported that at all to the, I'm over here. Have you reported that at all to the police in the course of that experience?
You know, I have and it ceases for a while and then it just comes back again. Um, and I don't, I'm not watering my lawn at 11 o'clock at night anymore, so I got a new lawn, so I don't have to do that and watch the activity in strange times of the night. And so we have our little quasi neighborhood watch, if you will. But it's, yeah, I haven't seen too much activity. Then again, I'm not up at 11, 12 o'clock at night to see it, but certainly I know that I can reach out to our police here.
And that's what I was going to recommend, the police chief is here. If there is a concern, by all means, feel free to reach out to him and register. That, that was all.
Well, thank you. I just, you know, was on point of this gentleman's point to that and I'd rather have something that's legit and legal rather than neighbors selling it.
I appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, back to the budget workshop. Any comments or questions from my colleagues? I don't see any going up. I see, okay, I'll start with Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, comment how wonderful it is that we were able to get the reserve percentage up to 25%, especially considering the year that we've had. So that's pretty fantastic. And the shaving off the budget was minimal, so I think this was a win all around. So thank you, everyone, for the wonderful work that you've put into it.
Thank you. Councilmember Martine, uh, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to give some kudos to Finance Director Corvick. My eyes are rolling around in opposite directions. I can't imagine what you've been going through for the last several months. So thank you, thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate your work and also city manager Star and the rest of the team who put this together. You didn't do this in five minutes. This was a lot, a lot of work. Um, I still have a few questions, but they're minor, I'm going to probably nag the city manager tomorrow. And then we'll see again on Wednesday, yes? We'll be back here on Wednesday reviewing the same document or we'll do something else?
Uh, that on Wednesday, that will just be adopting, officially adopting the budget.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Uh, yeah, a few items. The issue regarding part-time benefit employees, I believe I saw in the presentation that we were going to narrow them down to six, correct? Okay. Now, I noticed in the fire department allocation, um, we have, that's please. There is an item for part-time benefited salaries in their budget. What staff members in fire are part-time benefited?
Uh, that would be a secretarial position?
Okay, so the one that's remaining there in the current.
Well, I, I believe that she's, I, let me see. Yes, that is a part-time benefited position, works 38 hours a week.
Now, um, are the part, are the part-time, are there, okay, is there part-time benefit employees presently in the Human Services Department?
Uh, yes.
Now, if we're going to narrow it down to six, ones in fire, are the remaining five to be in human resource, I mean, human services?
Um, let's see, there's a position in administration. There are a couple in the city yards, no, we eliminated all the positions in the city yard. So yes, they, most of them would be in human services. Oh, you just have one? Okay, I'd have to go through the, let me think. Police department might have a couple, I think, do you? I'll have to go through the budget to give you an answer.
That, that's where I got confused.
Unless you know off the top of your head, Janet.
I don't, I'm, I'm looking in budget.
Yeah, I'd have to go through each budget.
My concern is that there's an employee that I know, who I won't bring up the name because we're in a closed, open session, who's in human resources, who does a very good job. I don't see that person's name in the human services. If I keep saying resources, forgive me, it's just out of habit, Human Services Department. So I'm wondering if that particular person is part-time benefited and is going to be, or the position itself will be eliminated. I, after the meeting, I'll inquire about that person, but I just wanted to know how many of the six total throughout the whole city structure that we're going to have remaining, where they were going to be and who they were.
I'll get back with you with the positions and where they are.
Okay.
So we only have one in human services and that is a human services technician. We have three in the city manager department. They're IT, two of those are unfunded and one is funded with an employee holding that position. So that's four right there. Plus we had.
And one in fire, five.
And then we have, um, not sure what the other one was. Oh, I believe in public works.
Oh, yes, the secretarial position.
The office technician, part-time benefited, that one is one as well, but the person that was put in that position was full-time and so that position became a full-time position.
Right.
Okay, all right. And then I wanted to broach the idea of, um.
Just to explain the way, if we do an in-house recruitment, um, to, for a part-time position, or actually if we do an outside recruitment as well, if the individual we end up hiring has any CalPERS-related history, we cannot hire them as a part-time benefited. So even though it may appear in the budget as a part-time benefited, they have to come on board as a full-time position because CalPERS will not allow us to hire anybody who has prior CalPERS experience and put them under social security.
That's fair, that's fair. Wanted to broach the idea of development impact fees. I know that there was a line item in the, um, in the budget with respect to that. For me, for future developments, I'd actually like to see, um, that increased or at least get further concessions from developers. We have other cities such as Fontana, Rancho, Rialto, other cities that, um, negotiate a higher amount from developers to pay for the services, the higher demand that their developments would, uh, call for. So take, for example, the downtown northern specific plan in Montclair, the developments that are coming in, where we're going to have anywhere of 3, 4, 5,000 residents increased at those sites. Obviously, that is a further, there will be a further need and demand and drain on police services, on fire services. And that said, uh, like the city of Fontana, for example, Fontana itself has gotten one or two fire engines, even though they were county, I understand that, but nonetheless, prior to that, I believe, um, they get some bang for their buck out of the development. So I, I would like us to consider doing that so that way it increases our cash flow with respect to, um, the budget in that regard and it would offset our costs for fire and police services. Get us more, um, maintenance equipment, get us whatever we need. But that, that is something that I, I would like us to, um, to consider.
Those are the community facility districts that we've since established. In fact, we have a CFD at the Paseos, a CFD at the Village, uh, I'm at the Arrow Station, the Alex and Kendry, uh, there's a CFD there as well. That's all part of future development in North Montclair. And the general plan update that will be coming to the city council will actually have a comprehensive formulaic calculation as it relates to figuring out what those costs should be as it relates to the additional requirement for police, fire and other maintenance services that will be targeted towards those particular community areas. So the CFDs is a process that we initiated back in round with, well, with the Village Partners Project, I mean, the Paseos Project, so that goes back to 2012. And it's a process going forward now. As far as the development impact fees, there are different kinds of development impact fees and the county has its development impact fee, the school districts have their development impact fees, and then the city has a development impact fee as well. Those fees are actually already quite high. In fact, when, uh, the, um, theater was being constructed at Montclair Place, the IEUA fee in relation to the impact on there was several million dollars related to, uh, the util, the fixtures, the sinks, the commodes. And we had to negotiate with IEUA in order to get them to drop that fee. So they're already significant development impact fees. So the one I think you're targeting is the CFDs and we have those in place now.
Okay, that's fair. With respect to the budget, I, as I shared with the city manager, shared with the mayor, there's a lot of good in it that I like. We got increases in public works, increases in code enforcement. I'm pleased with the, um, one elevation of a particular staff member in human services. But there's also some areas where I still have some hesitation. And, uh, I, 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 I'm on the fence, but I, I think I'll be fine come Wednesday because there are some items that I have been beating the drum on that are included in this budget. But, uh, I, I'm glad that we're at a surplus level as opposed to being in the hole. And I, this being my first rodeo with respect to the budget as the newest, uh, council member on this dais, perhaps my uneasiness would, would ease with time. But nonetheless, I have looked at the budget, there are some items that, like I said, I'm pleased about, some that I'm not. But I will, um, I have 48 hours to come to a conclusion, but, uh, I, I don't. but I don't think there should be anything of major concern. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't know we'd have a discussion tonight on development impact fees. Just to chime in, I would oppose increasing them. I would love to see them lowered. Development impact fees have a negative effect, especially on housing and retail development. In retail or commercial development, if the fees are too high, the person who owns that property has to make their lease or their rates, their monthly rental rates, lease rates, higher to accommodate those fees. They can't absorb them. When it comes to housing, higher development impact fees translate into much more expensive housing. We're in a crisis in this state, and just my opinion and in this community, we have people who can't afford rent, they work here. We have people who work here who can't afford to buy a home in this community. Development impact fees only increase those costs. So in that regard, I, you know, we're not at that debate yet, but if we get to that, I don't have any idea where I am. As far as the budget, I'm a bit where you are. I probably, I can, I could live with it, I'm not happy with some things in there. Certainly, the public affairs, economic affairs, promotion position, I'm dead-set against it. But if I have to swallow it, I will, and I'll deal with that when that time comes. But there are some good things in there, code enforcement, some good things with Public Works, which we need to continue to move forward with. My long-term concern, I think it's everybody's here, is, and this thing is flashing that my mic is on, I know it is. It's just annoying. I think our long-term issue for this in any city will be PERS. We have to figure this out. Whatever the solution is, we've got to come together and figure it out. I wish we could have ways to coordinate certain things with other cities. I have some ideas on that, I won't bring it up now, but I don't know if they'd be doable after I've done some research into PERS. But that, to me, is the biggest issue we have to face. We have promises we've made to employees here in the future. Every time we hire somebody, let's not forget, that's a 20 to 30-year commitment with PERS. So we need to think about that. But we do need to, we're a small city, we're in a different band than some of our neighboring cities. It's great to see what they're doing, but we don't match up with them, we don't fit, because we're in a different band. So just keep that in mind, thank you.
Thank you. If I may, just to comment on the, maybe I can assuage Councilmember Ruiz's concerns about the position in the Economic Development Program. It isn't going to be a Public Information Officer position. This is a position that will be called Economic Promotion Coordinator, and it will be specifically tasked with promoting economic activity in the city. So it will go out to try and recruit, along with other members in the department, businesses to the city of Montclair. It will interact and facilitate and help assist businesses to secure funding, for example, and other sorts of programs. So the, when I associated it with the Public Information Officer position, that was the position that was created by the council a year and a half ago, and we never hired to fill that position. And now, what I'm only meaning to say is that we've transitioned that position to become this new position that would have a totally different role, but basically replaces that position only in the sense that it will have responsibility for the social media that the city operates, its Facebook account, its Instagram, the city's homepage. And that is the public face that the position will be responsible for. But the other duties and responsibilities will be clearly on an economic development and housing plane. Well, thank you very much. First of all, I want to apologize to the city council for the 11th hour and having this workshop since Thursday is the first day of the new fiscal year, and we got to have a budget adopted by then. So what I'd like to do is move the staff recommendation, the proposed staff budget by staff, to Wednesday, Wednesday, June 30, as for consideration by the city council at the special city council meeting. Is there a second to the motion?
I will second it.
Okay. And I think instead of doing roll call, any abstentions or objections to the motion? If not, then we will be 5-0, and I will ask my councilmembers, if you have any questions between now and Wednesday, feel free to reach out to the City Manager with your questions, or we'll try to address those questions at the council meeting on Wednesday. And we'll go from there. So with that, we are now adjourned. Thank you for all your hard work.